Meeting to order. We'll go ahead and call the November meeting to order. Since we don't have the flag, we're still going to open with a moment of silence though, and then, uh, once we get back to our regular meetings at Blountville, we'll be able to, uh, do the pledge, and we may start having some students come in and do that pledge. Mr. Hughes had, uh, a video of a youth group doing it, which was really good, a small group, but we'll do that once we get back to Blountville, but this time, we're going to open up with a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, we'll go straight into the approval of the agenda, I turn it over to Dr. Cox.
So, the, the first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and, uh, it's before you, uh, we do recommend its approval.
And keep in mind, when we approve the, uh, agenda, we're approving the consent agenda also, and is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to have pulled off for discussion purposes? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye. Next on the list is public comment, do we have anyone who's signed up for public comment? We have two, and I'll take them in the order in which they were presented, if you'll come down to the microphone here at the bottom of the stage, Curtis, I believe it was Litten, I have your address and phone number, but just give us your name for...
Okay.
Okay. Well, you haven't seen mine yet, so.
Actually, I just wanted to speak to the board, and I'm, I don't usually come to these meetings, so I don't know if you can interact with me or not, I'm hoping so.
We, we cannot, we can listen to what you have to say, but there's, uh, our board policy is no, no interaction, so we'll just listen and take notes of anything.
Okay. Through, I guess, a series of unfortunate events, I had to assist the South girls soccer team this year. I've coached soccer for about 11 years now with my kids growing up, I've coached rec, travel, now I'm coaching indoor. Through that, what I realized is that if we don't have a good feeder system, we're never going to be good. A couple of years ago, I tried to get soccer at the middle school at Colonial Heights, uh, there was just too many obstacles at the time, so I kind of let it lay. This year, I started again with the same process, uh, I volunteered to be the coach, so I took the financial aspect out of it, because I wouldn't expect to get paid this year. I talked to the, what is it, the Sullivan County Sports Group or whatever, and I believe we can find funding as far as goals and nets, so that takes that aspect out of it. I talked to the athletic director at the school, the athletic director said absolutely, he's on board with it. Initially, the, the big issue was the, the Title IX, I've spoken with the Title IX Board out of Nashville, I've also randomly called, uh, I think four now, athletic directors across the state, just to get their opinion on it, and everybody has a consensus that now that the girl's season is over, if we offer boys this year with the intention of offering girls in the fall at South, then it is not a Title IX infringement. Uh, I would like to open it up, though, to all three schools, the Colonial Heights Middle, the Sullivan Gardens, the six through eight, and also, uh, the North Middle, so that when we do consolidate schools, then these kids just kind of have a one-up, and they're already kind of forming in a team, and forming relationships, and friends, and peer groups, and it kind of eases the transition a little bit. This is where I was hoping for some interaction, the only, as far as uniforms go, the way we did it at South, sorry, my mask is down, but, uh, the way we did it at South was we asked the girls, or, to find like a sponsor, and I think it was a hundred dollar sponsor per child at that time, so, uh, that paid for uniforms, I don't know if that also went toward, uh, like insurance for the group or not, I've actually, the athletic director at Colonial Heights is researching that now, to see like the cost of insurance, it can't be much. Uh, I do know that East is already offering a middle school team, so I do think that it would be fair, if you're offering at one school, that you should offer it at another. I don't know what other obstacles I'm looking at, or hurdles that I need to jump through, but I feel like I've addressed the majority.
I would ask that you contact, uh, Dr. Cox's office, and he'll schedule the, uh, person that you would need to talk with, he can tell you the individual here at Central Office that you could talk with, that might give you some guidance, and I know Mr. Robinson here on board works on, uh, some other athletic, uh, services in the community, so he might be able to get advice too, but the, the step number one will be to contact Dr. Cox, and let him give you, uh, the name of the person you need to talk to here at Central Office, and he can guide you in that area.
Do you think that I've met the, the stipulations to your knowledge?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to say that you have.
Right, but, or if you can think of one that I have not followed.
Right, and that's why I would encourage you to talk to Dr. Cox, and he would talk with someone who's more familiar with the athletic rules than, than I would be as far as community aspects, and if you have questions, or he has questions, he can, uh, guide you in the right direction.
Okay.
But we appreciate it.
All right.
Dr. Palmer, they've requested that you turn the microphones up a little. Got that? Okay. It may be that I just need to talk louder. The, uh, second, uh, individual, uh, is not going to speak, he's here for a different purpose, and we just have his name on the list incorrectly, I guess, uh, so at this time, Dr. Cox, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, uh, we come now to the portion of the meeting that's Director's comments, and so, uh, the first, uh, item is I have, uh, the honor and pleasure of recognizing, um, a couple of, of staff members here, uh, Anthony Toddie and Brant, uh, I'm sorry, Brandon Renfro, so gentlemen, if you'll meet me down front at the microphone, I'll, uh, come down and talk to you there. So, I apologize, Mr. Todd, I mispronounced your name, it actually says Toddie on my sheet, so, blame Mr. Hare for that. So, um, these two gentlemen are here, um, we would like to recognize them, if you, you've been around to different places, uh, in some places, you see a sign that says heroes work here, and our schools are no exception, and tonight, I'm pleased to give you, uh, an example of why we have heroes working in our schools. On the morning of October 29th, an accident had occurred in which a person was seriously injured near Sullivan East High School. Anthony Todd, science teacher at Sullivan East High School, pulled over and provided aid to the injured pedestrian, he called 911, notified the school's SRO, and while Mr. Todd was assisting the injured person, Mr. Renfro, who is our fire science teacher, utilized his skill as a firefighter and a trained first responder, to apply the appropriate first aid to the injured person. Their efforts together, and their swift response to a very difficult situation, um, they were there until the paramedics arrived, and what was certain to be perhaps a fatal situation, became one that led to a life being saved, so would you please join me in helping celebrate two of our heroes? And so, Mr. Renfro, uh, as I said, is a teacher, and teaches in our fire, fire science, so I'm going to invite him to just say a couple of words about that program, that, uh, about what, what the kids learned in that class. All right, would you mind to do that for us?
The fire science program at East is, is really, uh, important, it's touched the community, it's, we're getting, uh, students the opportunity to, to get jobs, but what I really wanted to say tonight was, uh, I want, I appreciate the recognition, but also wanted to recognize our CTE Director, Mr. Aaron Flannery, and my Principal, Mr. Andy Hare, for supporting the program and believing in it, and without them being behind it, and knowing how important it is for these children, uh, students to learn these skills, that could have an effect on, uh, themselves and their community, uh, without, without those gentlemen, I wouldn't be here, so I really appreciate those guys.
Again, thank you, gentlemen, for all that you do for us, and thank you for your exceptional bravery, and for, um, assisting and saving the life of this individual, we're very proud of you, thank you. Thank you, next, under the Director's report, I'm going to touch on a, a few things, just briefly, that we talked about in our work session, uh, we did have an extended, uh, presentation and discussion about our Virtual Learning Academy, at the work session last week, um, and just to remind everyone, um, about that, the, uh, Virtual Learning Academy applications are open, uh, they, they, the, uh, opportunity to apply for Virtual Learning Academy, uh, ends this coming Sunday night, so we, um, have sent out another update, uh, so, anyone who is, is hearing this, um, and if you, if your intention is to enroll your students in our Virtual Learning Academy, those applications will need to be made, uh, by this Sunday evening, um, and just to kind of, uh, refresh, students will have to, uh, have been successful in the first semester, both with their grades and their attendance, in order to be considered, uh, and everybody will need to, uh, apply for second semester, regardless of whether you participated during the first semester, and, um, today, or as, uh, as of 2:30 today, uh, we had received 775 applications, and so we'll be working through those applications, um, and verifying grades and attendance as a part of the consideration. The other thing that's significant is that we are working very hard to have only two platforms for second semester, uh, for the, the parents and students who want an online option, Virtual Learning Academy will be that option, and we're working very hard so that no teacher's teaching in two platforms, and I just would reiterate, um, that, uh, the staffing could change for second semester, so, uh, it's not guaranteed that, uh, that a student's teacher or teachers would be the same in the second semester in the Virtual Learning Academy, so, again, 775 applicants as of 2:30 today. 775 applicants, um, currently, uh, for Virtual Learning Academy.
And they will receive something from you about acceptance, right?
They will, we will notify, uh, we will notify, uh, those who have been accepted, so, uh, we'll, we'll begin working on that, and, and, and on the staffing, and we'll let folks know, uh, once they've been accepted, okay? Any other questions about VLA? All right, I wanted to give just a couple of updates about West Ridge, we talked about that a little bit last time, um, we have, uh, been conducting, uh, several interviews, we have, uh, conducted interviews for activities directors, for the deans, and, uh, we, we are, have in front of us the, uh, interviews for assistant principals, um, one of the things that, that is a little bit of a change, um, our original intent was to, um, announce the, uh, activities director and the deans in the first pass, but, uh, we have made a change, that, um, uh, we want to announce all of the administrative teams by school, uh, as one batch, we have a few more interviews to do, uh, before we can do that, but we will be releasing, um, our choices for the activities director, uh, very soon, perhaps as early as tomorrow, uh, so that the, the, uh, scheduling can commence and those activities, and then, as we complete the other administrative vacancy interviews, uh, in about another week or so, we will announce those appointments, um, by, by school team. Any questions about that? At last time, uh, the board heard a detailed, um, presentation on the current technical course offerings at West Ridge, as well as at Sullivan East, and those that would be, uh, shared between, and then also the opportunities that we're working on jointly with Northeast State University. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
That brings us down to the unfinished business, and first item on the agenda for unfinished business, for, from Dr. Cox, his policy is 6.319, alternative education to adopt on second reading.
And we do, uh, request, um, adoption on second reading, please.
I'd like to make a motion that add A, B, and C, and vote on those together.
Item B is a new, and I believe, a request, am I correct on that, Mr. Miller?
Oh, it doesn't say on there, okay, well then, then A and C, if it's new, it doesn't say either way.
Pardon? Well, it's, it's, it's just an amendment, it's not second reading, is what, I believe I'm correct on that.
Yes, that, that's correct, the only policy that's second reading is A, but, uh, Mr. Ierson is correct that these were on the agenda previously.
Right. Okay, we, we can go ahead, there's no objection to it then, and I'm going to repeat who makes the motion tonight, because Christie's at home, uh, taking minutes, so Mr. Ierson made the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Robinson, second's the motion, so we have the motion to adopt policies A, B, and C, and note that B and C are some changes that's required by the state. Any discussion? Ms. Buckles is doing roll call, so.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ierson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Rouse?
Yes.
Mr. Spivey?
Yes.
And thank you, uh, item D then, is the Holston Valley Middle School property, and, uh, Mr. Hull, do you have any updates for us?
Um, I don't have any, anything new to tell you, um, the, our purchaser is, uh, having a title examination and getting title insurance, and, so they have a lawyer doing that, and that's still in the process, but, uh, I'm staying in touch with them and pushing them along, so hopefully that'll get done shortly.
Thank you, then, item E is a, is an action item, we do respectfully request that the board would approve the revisions to the operating procedures manual, last week, at the work session, we did go through this, I'll provide, again, a summary of the rationale. In the first, uh, version, uh, a lot of the guidance was, uh, tied to the Epi-curve measure, uh, which was the very first metric that we looked at, uh, again, the state didn't provide any, um, and then essentially no longer is, is supported or even provided by the state, since then, we have, uh, come to use, uh, multiple metrics, uh, most especially the one that's been developed and recognized by the Tennessee Department of Health, is the White House Task Force metric, uh, so, uh, we, um, just remove the references to that, and then, we did keep the, uh, the colors, the, the green, the yellow, and the red, but we had merged already, uh, most of the yellow and red procedures, uh, when we began to operate on our hybrid, so this just cleans it up a little bit, it has caused some confusion among folks when they looked at that and, and, uh, didn't understand that we were operating, um, in, in the color, and it was tied to the metric, so, well, again, we do respectfully request that the board approve the updated versions of the operating, um, framework.
You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Hughes makes the motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Dr. Rouse, second's the motion, so we have a, a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ierson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Rouse?
Yes.
Mr. Spivey?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you, item F, um, is, is really an information item, we did talk about, uh, the operating, uh, plan or schedule at the last meeting, and so this evening, I have a new packet of information, uh, before you, uh, some of which I have sent to you electronically, but what I'd like to do is just very briefly go through this new information, as, uh, as you know, we do have a scheduled call with the Sullivan County Regional Health Department every Thursday, and we did, again, today, and, um, so, the, that, the first piece of information, I would just like to go through that, um, uh, the, what, the first item is really not a COVID-related, but it's, we're, uh, flu season is upon us, and, uh, one of the, uh, statistics I think is very, um, good, is that we have had 961 flu vaccines administered in Sullivan County among our staff and students, um, and then also, next week, we'll be hosting, uh, a drive-in flu, uh, clinic actually here in the central parking lot for the community, uh, so just getting to some COVID numbers, so approximately 4,530 total cases in Sullivan County, uh, the data on the website is from yesterday, but they, uh, Dr. Um, or Mr. May actually asked us to, Mays, asked us to, uh, add 200 to that, so if you looked on the website, you're probably going to see 4330, I think, but adding that estimated 200, there were two days that the state website was down, uh, and so that's, uh, roughly two days' worth of data entry, there are, uh, 88, uh, excuse me, 88 new cases yesterday, and between 60 and 70 new cases today, uh, the good, some good news, the transmission rate is down, the, the factor that they call the R naught, um, which is a, uh, how they track that, is actually at 1.0, which it hasn't been for a while, uh, we are in the red zone, uh, with a 14.9% positivity rate, and so the threshold for being in the red zone, according to the White House Task Force, is two parts, there has to be a 10% or higher positivity rate, and, um, a, a, um, a positive case rate of 100 per 100,000, and so you see our positivity, uh, case rate is 237 over the past week. Also, they shared that there are a few, uh, clusters in the count, in the county, namely in nursing home, and, and some, uh, I guess, closed communities, but they were emphatic that the, uh, the, um, uh, the most significant contributor is community spread through things like family events, family networking, and a few workplaces, the pediatric rate has remained relatively, uh, stable, and it's at 13 and a half percent, which is lower than state average, so the comment there was, um, that, uh, that our schools, uh, school communities are doing a good job of containing, uh, COVID, and that, uh, that's not increased, and again, continuing to, to advise that school day operations, uh, are not a significant factor in community spread, and then I shared a, a website that, uh, was shared with us, you see the link there, and if you just go to that, uh, it's, um, covid19.ten.gov, and you select Sullivan County, that'll give you the most current, uh, county information, and, uh, perhaps by tomorrow, uh, after having been down a couple of days, it will be updated. The next sheet is, uh, one that Mrs. Copas routinely updates for us, and, and you can see, uh, the numbers there, and just to summarize, uh, we currently have, uh, staff and student positive tests, and the, these are folks that are, who have tested positive and are currently in isolation, and that's a total of 16 students, I'm sorry, 16 staff members and 29 students, um, we have 12, uh, staff members who are awaiting test results, and 23 students awaiting test results, we have a total of, uh, 20, uh, 61 staff members who are quarantining, and we then also have 641 students, uh, who are currently quarantined, and I can tell you, uh, since this was, uh, printed, uh, there have, have been some changes there, so, um, and then you can note the changes to our operating schedule, the third piece is just, um, the, um, uh, this is also from the county data snapshot, uh, which is available online, and then the last piece is the information, uh, that's, uh, that's shared with us periodically by our health department, and this, um, this is the most current information from the 2nd of November, a few days ago, so, um, that's the updated information, uh, concerning COVID in our schools, uh, we do continue to evaluate situations, and, um, we have, uh, uh, of course, Central High School is, is, um, is closed, uh, to, and is operating on, online, as, as you know, uh, and then we have other schools that are operating, uh, certain grades in remote, um, option, so, or in, uh, in online option, rather than not remote. So that's, uh, that's the information that I have to share with you, do you have any questions for me, one, uh, one thing I did want to, specifically mention, um, at the last meeting from Ms. Copas's worksheet, Mr. Spivey had asked, uh, a question about whether the positive test and the, um, person's awaiting test were a part of a quarantine, and I wanted to clarify, the quarantine numbers do include, uh, the number of folks who are awaiting test results because they're in quarantine, however, uh, someone who has tested positive, staff and students are not a part of that cumulative quarantine number, because the term appropriate for them is isolation, so a person who, uh, has tested positive is, uh, is in a period of isolation typically for ten days. A person who is in quarantine is a close contact or in exposure and typically quarantined for fourteen days.
So for clarification on this chart here, twelve staff members are also included in the sixty-one?
In the sixty-one, that's correct.
Okay.
But the sixteen who are recorded as isolation, if you wanted to get the number of people absent because of COVID issues, you would add that to the sixty-one.
So right now then we have, I say right now, I know it changes, you know, at the end of every day. But this sheet would show then seventy-seven staff who are out right now.
That's correct.
And six hundred and seventy of our students.
Would be out as a result of either quarantine or isolation.
Okay.
But the ones who were tested positive are included in those quarantine numbers.
Right.
Because you're considered in quarantine even if you're awaiting a test result.
Okay.
And also for clarification, we are, Central is closed because we're unable to get substitutes to cover the classes or to get proctors. It's not necessarily because of a high staff infection or high student infection.
That, that is, that is the primary reason that when we, when we do have to go online is, it's a staffing issue.
And looking at the numbers correctly, it appears that we have seven hundred and sixty-six active cases in Sullivan County now. If you look at that chart, there's forty-three, thirty altogether. Then thirty-five, sixty-four have either recovered or they are inactive. So that leaves seven sixty-six that are actually active cases in Sullivan County. And I think that's important to keep that number in mind as we talk about school closures and talk about the number of students that are involved here.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Is there any data quantification from the health department about, you know, we keep talking about the pediatric infection rate being thirteen and a half percent and holding steady. Are they actually quantifying though the number of tests that are being done on pediatric patients to see if those correlate? Because I do have a concern, and I voiced this at a few other meetings. Sullivan County is one of the lowest in the state in our rate of testing. While at the same time, you know, we, we're in the top six or seven counties in the state as far as active cases. So I, I have concern about just looking at data without also looking at how often are we actually having tests done? I'm not disputing the health department's conclusion.
Right.
School day operations are going well because I feel like all our teachers and everybody are working way harder than they ever have to follow this guidance. But I do have concern about just looking at the plain number of active cases versus also looking at the fact that it's a fact. I mean, we're, we're one of the lowest in the state out of any county in our testing rates.
It is my understanding that, that the, it's thirteen percent of the confirmed cases.
Okay.
Thirteen and a half rather. Anyone else?
I have one question is with, with what you were saying is like Central is now on quarantine because we can't find.
No, no, Central is operating online.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. I said it wrong. You're, you're exactly right. I apologize. So Central is operating online because we can't find enough people to substitute.
We had, we had, we had the, the number of, of staff vacancies that we couldn't cover got to be unmanageable. So we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough adults to, to proctor the class. Typically when a, if it's a few staff members, we have other staff members that can proctor the class while the teacher teaches remotely from home.
Okay.
But the, that number overwhelmed us. We didn't, we just simply didn't have enough adults to do the proctoring.
Have we, have we can, looked into, I know a lot of the surrounding systems are giving bonuses to get people to sign up. They're increasing the, the pay that they're giving to the substitutes. Are we looking at any other options?
We have, we have looked at lots of different options. As a matter of fact, one of the, the things that we do have currently posted is to try to entice retired teachers who are retired through TCRS to, to come and, and be substitutes and or proctors for a raise pay of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day funded through CARES. But the, the problem, Mr. Ierson, is the same problem that we had even before COVID is we just have a, a pretty significant shortage of people to be substitute teachers. Now we have, I think we talked about this in the work session last time, we did pick up, I think, eight new ones prior to last week's report. So we are getting some more people. But, you know, we, we do find a greater level of reluctance on the part of people that have historically sub for us because many of them are in an age group that has high risk.
Have you, how are you actually trying to put that out there? Because it seems like there's a lot of the retired teacher associations you can actually publish it through. Are you trying those?
Yes, we've, we, we've actually talked to them. And not all of our retired teachers belongs to the association. So what we're doing is working actually through our HR office and, and doing direct, we're doing a, a direct contact letter from those who have retired.
Okay.
Because the most comprehensive list is really from our HR office. We did, we, I spoke personally to Mr. Doty, who's the president of the association. And so he advised that to get the most contact to, to go that way. So that's what we're doing.
Okay, yeah, because I get their email and, or I get their newsletter and I hadn't seen anything about it. So I was kind of curious how we're reaching out. So thank you.
Ken, going back to the chart we just went over, and I want to clarify so I can understand when I think about our operations. I mean, it shows six hundred and seventy students in quarantine and/or isolation. And it shows seventy-seven staff members in that same position. That number though, what I'm, what I want to try to understand when we're thinking about operational decisions is they're really, if you look at Rock Springs having fifth grade remote until.
Actually, actually, that's a mistake. That, that should be Miller Perry.
Okay, Miller, Miller Perry, fifth grade remote until November twelfth. Sullivan Gardens, the whole school K through eight is remote until November ninth. The seventh grade at Colonial Heights is remote until November eleventh. And Central is remote until November thirteenth. So my question is, those numbers I just added together that make six hundred and seventy students and seventy-seven staff, they're a lot more than six hundred and seventy students out of our face-to-face students who actually are not in our school buildings right now, correct?
Yes.
I mean, do we have a number on that? And I, I had just thought of that. So I'm not trying to blindside anything.
No, I, I mean, if, if we have a student, for, for example, who is, is participating in VLA, we might not know if, if they've tested.
Right. But my point is, if you look on this chart, it only has forty, forty-three, so fifty-three Central students in that total number of students. But we know the whole student body is at their house. And I'm trying to understand from a learning perspective and also operational perspective, how many of our students due to the quarantine and the health department restrictions and the guidance from the CDC really aren't on this chart, but they're not in a school building? Because when I'm thinking of, at what point in time do we talk about changing our operational procedures? I, I think that's a much truer measure because if we're talking about whether kids are in school or they're at home, I mean, if that number's a couple thousand plus the VLA, I mean, you know, you get to a point where why are we keeping going forward when, if we look at the true metrics, you know, sixty percent of our students are actually at home whether they want to be or not? So that, I'd like us to think about that going forward because if we have to quarantine a whole high school, then that number just jumped, you know, eight hundred more. So that's fifteen hundred, not counting the VLA. So I, I just think if we're thinking about decisions, because I'd rather kids be in school too. But we should not just look at the number that are in quarantine. We should also be thinking about how often we're having to shut down classrooms and whole schools when we make that decision.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that? Okay, moving then to new business. Last time we talked about BTS billing error. And so we are still working with Mr. Hull on that. And at the, as per our discussion, we, we will ask for further clarification. So that is in process. Item B is an action item. I'm asking you respectfully this evening that you would consider approving a position, the coordinating principal position for the Central Campus. We talked about that at the last meeting. And again, just a brief summary, this is something that has been, I guess, discussed for, for some time. It actually predates me about the programs that, our district programs that will remain here at Central, which would be several of the career and technical classes that we talked about at the work session. In addition of our county's physical alternative school, we are post-COVID. And then, as you know, we're talking a lot about the virtual learning academy that we would, since it would be a district program, would be hosted and administered out of this campus. So I have the recommendation there. This would be one of the administrative positions, if approved, that will immediately post and fill and then announce as the full slate of our administrative positions for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two school year.
You've heard the recommendation from Dr. Conch for this position of the coordinated principal of the Central Campus. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Gilmore makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hughes has seconded the motion. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ierson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Rouse?
Yes.
Mr. Spivey?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is concerning the recommendation of the resolution for the five hundred dollar per teacher stipend for supplies. And just a little bit of background. Now, we talked about this at the work session, but to bring everyone up to speed, the board had passed a previous resolution asking the county commission for access to its funds, the school board's funds in reserve accounts in order to finish the projects for East Middle School, West Ridge High School, specifically for outdoor lighting, for furnitures, fixtures and equipment for West Ridge, for turf projects and for technology for West Ridge High School. The county commission did have a separate resolution that went through several changes. Mr. Jones and Mr. Loach and I participated in several committee meetings with the commission and also attended the meeting where they did vote on these items. But they did include an additional item that was not a part of the board's original request. And that was to provide a five hundred dollar per teacher stipend for supplies. And so since that has not been acted on by this board and for, for that to be, become official and for us to distribute the, the money, if that's the board's pleasure, it requires action of this board to do so. So.
I'll make the motion that we approve the five hundred dollars per teacher up to the cap of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. I believe it was in the resolution that was presented by county commission. And I'll be looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Spivey seconded the motion. So we have a motion to, by me, to approve the five hundred dollars for each teacher up to a cap of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Mr. Spivey seconded that. Discussion. Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay.
Really just repeat a little bit of what I said in the workshop. I think people deserve to know not just how we vote, but why we vote. Just a clarification, I oppose spending this money for a couple, several different reasons. First of all, procedurally, it was done backwards. This resolution should have came from the director of schools. The board should have voted, then the commission should, excuse me, should have voted to move the money. That didn't happen. Then additionally, I have some other concerns. First of all, if this money was needed for, for this purpose, it wasn't requested by this director or this school board. But if we were going to spend that kind of money, I just think there's lots of other things we ought to consider. I think we should consider, I would, I would support that money being spent in the form of a raise that's permanent. Money for substitutes, money for additional equipment. We, I know the budget inside the construction projects. I know as we get toward the end, we're going to, we're going to need that money. If we didn't want to spend it for other purposes. We don't have school boards at the middle school. We don't have a wrestling mat, mat at the, at the middle school. There's so many needs that that money could serve. And if we get to the point that we need supplies, I, I think that it should come through the director. Additionally, I've contacted some of our principals and some of our people. We get supplies from the state on a regular basis. So I don't think there's a shortage of supplies out there. If there are, no one's asked for them. I'd also like to point out that this is the first time that the commission took it upon itself to pass a resolution that the school system didn't ask them to pass. April two thousand and nineteen, they took it upon themselves to pass a resolution to stop this high school that we're working on, knowing that we'd have to pay the bills anyway and it was under construction. Sixteen yes votes. Many of the same people that voted for us to spend this three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. I said in the workshop, and I'll say it again, I think it's a dangerous precedent and it's a slippery slope. I ran for the school board because I thought I was capable of making decisions on policy and how we spend money. I didn't run, to be told by the county commission. In fact, as a school board member, I've never been able to spend three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And when I say three hundred and eighteen thousand, that's the number I get if I take the six hundred and thirty-six teachers that we had on payroll last year, classroom teachers. That's, that's the, that's where I get to three hundred and eighteen thousand. Six hundred and thirty-six teachers last year. I don't know where that other number came from. But I've not been able to come to the board and spend that kind of money. Neither has anyone on the board. So for, for those reasons, I just don't think I could support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just like to say that the Tennessee Department of Education, the director of the Tennessee School Safety Center, Brenna Morse, which is a division of the Tennessee Department of Education, has provided teachers and administrators with a link for ordering any COVID-related supplies. And that link is currently open through November fifteenth. As far as other supplies, upcoming BEP funds, I understand, should be available in January or February. As Mr. Hughes noted, I have received no requests either from principals who I'm in regular contact with or teachers. It's not that we're not supporting teachers. I think the fact that we approved a two percent raise in the midst of a pandemic when lots of folks were being furloughed or laid off or their pay even lowered, we supported teachers with a two percent raise. We protected their virtual Wednesday. And I, I think that there, as Mr. Hughes also noted, there's some unforeseen cost about the upcoming projects that haven't been finished. And I just, I wasn't part of the board when there was no fund balance. But I understand it was very tenuous from month to month even to make payrolls sometimes. So I just think. So I just think, I appreciate the sentiments of the county commission for teachers, but I think we have a responsibility to be a good steward of our fund balance. And I'm not sure that's, this is good stewardship. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Rouse.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions and some comments as well. At this point in time, Dr. Cox, do we have any idea what the revenues will be?
No.
My second question, have we studied this to know if we have a need? You know, is there five teachers that need something right now? Are there 50 teachers that need something? As a classroom teacher, I, I can tell you, I always needed something and I could always spend the money. But I guess I'm asking, do we have a need and has that been brought forward?
Well, I, like you, I would say, you know, there's always a need. And I, I think if you ask teachers if there were things that they need, they would tell you what, what some of those things are. We have not systemically sent that out. We do provide, I think, $200 a teacher for BEP funds. And, you know, some teachers do spend all of that and some don't spend it. And when it's not spent, it does become a part of a pool.
And I guess I would think, to go into my comments, I'm not sure that the time is right, right now, because we are getting ready to close schools, we're getting ready to open a new school. And I think what teachers are going to need going forward is going to be even greater than what they need now. I think that students must remain at the forefront of any decision that we make as a board. And again, is this the wisest use of this money at this particular time? I'm concerned about the condition that we will be in in a year from now financially, or two or three years from now, because of the effects of the pandemic and what, what that's done to us economically. We're in a pandemic. We have expenses to incur that we, that some haven't even probably surfaced yet. We were told last week in the work session that our nutrition department is not at all where it should be at this time of year. This money that we're talking about spending is taxpayers' money, and I just want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck as possible. I am not against giving teachers extra money. I actually think it is a great idea. And I thank all commissioners who voted for it, but I don't believe that right now is the right time. And I am going to bore everyone with that same story that I did tell in the work session last week, because as someone else said earlier, I do think the public needs to know. As a principal at Holston Valley Middle School, I remember many times coming to principals' meetings on Thursdays. They were always every Thursday, once a month. We would go upstairs, pick up our checks from payroll, come downstairs. And more than one time, Dr. John O'Dell said, "Principals, do not go back to your schools and pass out these checks. They're not good. There's not enough money in the bank to cover them." I witnessed that. I was there during that time, Randall, as a, as a principal. So my hat is off, like I said at the work session, to the board, to the director of schools, to everyone involved that was able to build a fund balance. My hat is off for being such good stewards of the taxpaying money. But I lived during a time when there wasn't money to make payroll. So again, I'll say that I, I think giving teachers money is awesome. I just think the timing is not right for right now. Thank you.
Mr. Iverson.
I want to follow up on Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Rouse's statement. They, they brought a couple of good points up I'd like to follow up on. Mr. Rouse's point about the revenue and Mr. Gilmore's point about the 2% raise. I would, I would like to also remind everyone that, and I'm thinking I'm right here. You can correct me. I think Ingrid's in the audience. But I think during that period that we had that raise, when we obligated to the 2% raise, that the governor had, they backed out on their part of the money. And I think 400, we had to cough up another $464,000 to make up the difference, to make that 2% raise. So even though it was just a 2% raise, we kicked in an extra $464,000 to make that happen. And I worked with Mr. Loach on the budget. It was not an easy thing to do. It, but we did it because we felt like our teachers deserved it. And that's money that'll help on their retirement, money they can spend every month. And that's kind of the way I like to give teachers money if, and when I can. But since, since those points were brought up, that came to my mind. I wanted to bring you up. Thank, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Looking at this, I would love to do everything we can to help our teachers. And if I thought this was going to be something that they needed or wanted or asked for, I'd be all about it. Instead of saying, "I'd like to give you money for supplies," I'd rather say, "I'd like to give you money." I'd rather give them a $500 bonus. I'd rather than give a pay raise, another 1%, which is really close to the same dollar figure. So I'm not for this because, again, I think that we are going to have to really watch our pennies because, you know, I'm, I'm one of the people that went over to East and I noticed they don't have scoreboards. They're not having the, the wrestling mats that they need for their wrestling program. There's things at the middle school that still haven't been finished. And I mean, I made comments about that as far as I'd rather get that project finished before we worry about doing stuff for the high school, but that's a totally different debate. So, but for, for me, we need to worry about what our absolute needs are. In my mind, our absolute needs are doing something to help our teachers. We started a, we're going to have that committee now. I mean, we got that started. That's fantastic. We're going to work towards making their pay right, which is wonderful. Getting the elementary, getting the middle school completed. Get all the stuff that they need. Get them done. Get the high school, which is a long way from being completed. Get it the things that it needs. I really don't think that we need to dip into that fund balance, which has been meticulously, it, it has been, it, it was really in a bad shape a few years ago. Thankfully, I wasn't here during that time. I didn't see that. But I did see some of the meetings where they're talking about that and having to get a loan to pay, to make payroll and having to lose so much interest each year, our money just to interest. So we're in a much better place than we were. And if it's going to take $375,000, but we're going to put that towards scoreboards at both schools. Because I mean, if there's no scoreboards at the middle school, I imagine the scoreboards aren't a high school project either. I, I need to find that out for sure, but I don't believe they are. So there's needs that we're going to have. There's things that we're really going to need. The part about the teachers, helping the teachers, we just put a committee together. The first thing that we're doing, I don't want us to hamstring that committee by saying we're going to spend money that we don't need for that. So if this was something that the teachers, and I mean, you guys know, if the teachers need it, we're going to get emails. And I don't know if you guys have gotten any. I haven't got a single email or a single request of anybody saying, "Please give us that money," because it's, it's a great sentiment, but it's really not what they're needing. So I'm opposed to it, just for the pure fact of, I don't think it's what they're needing. I don't think it's what they're asking for. I'd much rather take that same amount of money and somehow return it to them as pay or as a raise. Now, don't get me wrong, when I say a $500 cash thing to them, I don't think that's the answer either, because I personally went through that when at my job, our pay was frozen and I was outside of that area. So all the controls were frozen. I'd luckily taken a staff job at the time, so my pay wasn't frozen. So over a three-year period, they said, "Your pay is frozen. You're going to get a cash bonus instead of something in your check." So you get a pretty good size of money. And everybody thought that was fantastic. But after four years, I was making $11,000 a year more than the guy right beside of me because it was coming to my base pay or in my paycheck versus a cash advance. So I don't think that's the right direction. I'd much rather give a 1% pay raise, but I still believe the best way to help our teachers is to give them something for themselves, not something that they can spend buying things or put it back to the school that the school may not need. So I've spoken too much, but that's where I feel.
Speaking of timing, they've passed this resolution that allows for the use of up to $375,000 for this $500 of instructional materials, right? I mean, they, they, we're not limited as to when we had to approve this, because I think everyone's made some very good points. And one of the ones that I think we could all agree with is there's always a need and, and it could always be used by teachers. But we really haven't had this request from teachers directly. So I guess, putting aside, you know, what order it went in, I understand Mr. Hughes' point and I think he's definitely correct. I mean, that's, you've got two different bodies and we have our role and, and it is, it is backwards. But I do also agree with Dr. Rouse. I appreciate the county commission sentiment without questioning anybody's motives, that they want to allow us to do this. It's great. So my question is, they've already approved it, right? So if we haven't had a request from our own teachers for it, whether you want to do it or you don't, or you think it's a good or bad idea, we're not limited to tonight in that decision unless they want to go pass a resolution to revoke it, which then I would have a question about what the motive was. So, and I think in politics, we always, if we're really trying to do what's best in our role, we shouldn't question motives as a starting point. And I don't. But my point being, even if we vote against this tonight, that doesn't mean that we, we might not change our mind in the future. But I do also, I have a lot of concerns about finishing these projects and our revenues. And I think Mr. Gilmore made a wonderful point, and it was one I, I was going to ask a question about, and he already had part of the answer. But, you know, it would seem some of these things that, that we would term supplies, there's, there's going to be the option for using CARES Act money, or there's going to be funding that's coming down the line that was specifically set aside for a lot of school districts this way. And what we have to realize, and I know everybody said it here, but I'll repeat it for anybody listening, is we're talking about spending our, our reserve fund balance of money in our budget that we have saved over time. So when we talk about a raise and, and that's, the chairman had a great idea with the equalization committee. I think everybody wants to do that to get the county up where it needs to be and our teachers and staff paid like they should be and like their colleagues in the surrounding cities. But when we're talking about a reserve balance, we can't just equate $375,000 with automatic pay raise because it's a recurring expense. And we, you know, if we don't have a recurring revenue stream for it, then that's pretty bad budgeting. That's how you end up with no fund balance and, and being near the verge of bankruptcy. So it was one I hadn't really thought about, but they approved it. So if we think the timing's bad, even if we want to do it, I don't see why we would be limited to tonight to make that decision. They've already approved it during the fiscal year. So unless they want to pass a resolution to revoke it, even if we vote against it tonight, we could vote for it in another meeting or two. And one of my, my bigger concerns, other than the budget, is everyone has made good points. We, we never received this request from our administrators, our principals, our teachers directly, and the people in the school system that, that would be actually using the money. We instead had a suggestion, while laudable, may not be necessary right now.
I'm going to probably speak opposite of what most of you have tonight. The $500 was approved for the 2021 school year. And that's important to remember that. We cannot spend that money for anything else unless the county commission approves it. That's during this school year. The only way we can spend any of our fund balance is to get the permission of the county commission. Whether you agree or disagree with that, that's the law. The law says that the county commission, your funded body, has to appropriate the money. And the only way that we're able to go out for bids tonight for turf on East football field, for West Ridge, the only way we're able to get parking lights for Southern Middle School, for West Ridge High School, the only way we're able to get athletic lights for Southern East Middle School and for West Ridge High School is to request the county commission to allow us to use fund balance. And they have done that. They have requested, they have approved our request. And they approved it in a different way than what we had submitted. We submitted to them asking for permission to use the fund balance to finish up what we needed. And they broke it down into four separate categories. And they even took the cap out. So it's not capped at any particular amount for anything other than the $500. And I realize that the $500 is out of order in the way of doing things. I've worked in this business for many years and I know what the order should be. But I also know what the role of the school board is and what the role of the county commission is. County commission has no authority to do a line item veto. But we all know that they do have a way of working around to influence people to make a decision. And we have no authority on hiring personnel. But as individual board members, you have the ability to talk with Dr. Cox about making a certain decision. Now, I personally don't think we should do that, but you have that ability to do that. If we don't approve this tonight, which it doesn't look like it, we're going to, if we don't approve it tonight, the money stays in the fund balance. Can we do it later in the year? Possibly. But we run the risk also of that being unappropriated, which it could be, I guess. It's been done in other issues before. So I said, we run the risk of being unappropriated if, if the county commission wanted to vote against it. If they wanted to come back and say, "We rescind our appropriation." They, they could do that. I hope that they would not. Do teachers need extra money? I can tell you that teachers always need extra supplies. And we're not talking about cleaning supplies here. We're not talking about PPE equipment. We're talking about teaching supplies. If you ask any teacher in the school system, if they need extra things for their classroom, 80% of them are going to say, "Yes, we need extra things." If they want to pull their money and buy a mat for wrestling, they have that authority. The way it was written, they said they could pull the amount. They don't have to spend it individually. But $100 could be pulled at each school. It could be pulled by the system, if the teachers wanted to do that. The key here was that they wanted the teachers to be in charge of that $500, whether it's right or wrong. Evidently, teachers have gone to county commissioners and said, "We have a need. We need your help." I wish they had come to us and said, "We need additional money." And how many teachers went to the county commissioners? I have no clue. It could have been one. It could have been two. It could have been three. But they felt it strong enough to put it in the resolution and it was passed by 21 people. And I believe one abstained for conflict of interest. So 21 out of the 22 present of the county commission approved that particular resolution, whereas only 17 out of the 22 approved us to buy technology for the classrooms at West Ridge. And only 17 out of the 22 present approved us to put turf on the football fields. I don't think we should allow any emotion to get into this. If we don't want to spend the $500 per teacher, that's fine. But just a month ago, someone on this board made a recommendation to hire 41 extra teachers, that we have a healthy fund balance. And I believe we could take that fund balance and pay for 41 teachers. I believe that statement was made. And if you need me to carry that resolution to the county commission, I will. I think that was pretty much a direct quote. So if we're able to talk about hiring 41 teachers on spur of the moment and using fund balance, and now we can't spend $375,000 for teaching supplies and equipment in a classroom, I think we have an issue. I think this board has an issue when it comes down to that. And with that said and done, if no one else has comments, I will call for a question.
I'd like to follow up on your comments first, if you don't mind.
That's the third time.
Pardon me?
I said, "That's the third time."
Is there a... I just want to be clear. Where we're at in our budget, we're being funded at the very bottom dollar, that we can be legally funded by law. The same commission is so generous with our teachers in this case. Just a year or so ago, tried to take 1.9 million from us and couldn't... Just a year or so ago, tried to take one point nine million from us and could not. They did take every single penny we had for renovation, which was only put in the budget in two thousand and fifteen. They raised taxes with the promise, with the specific promise that three cents go to renovation. We kept it in two budget cycles, I believe, and they took it back. Then they tried to take eight hundred thousand dollars that they couldn't take. I think they had more votes on that for this because it was their idea, not ours. I just wonder how this would have played out had we sent it over there, and it had been our idea. I appreciate, and I know that there were several commissioners that voted on that with all the best intentions. But I think it's important to realize that our budget now is funded at the very bottom dollar that's legal by law. And we have to be very careful with our money. And if this director was to come and ask on behalf of our teachers for something, I'd give it careful consideration, but I might vote no. But in this case, for all the reasons I've stated and others, I respectfully decline. And I re, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for the third time. I think that'd be it unless somebody prompts me, prompts me to do otherwise.
Any other comments?
I get, yeah, let me, I guess, maybe it kind of worries me the fact that the county commissioners have to make a resolution to give our teachers five hundred dollars for supplies. If our fund balance is as much as what it shows, our teachers shouldn't need this five hundred dollars. They should go buy what they need. Can you not hear me? Now, with our fund balance what it is, why is our teachers needing five hundred dollars? To me, they should go to their principal and order what they need for their classrooms. Our teachers, this year, has been rough. Now, if they'd have sent this to us and they say five hundred dollar bonus, or we're giving them a one percent raise, I can understand that. But what worries me is the fact that it says for supplies for their classroom. Of, where I work, if we need something, we order it. I would surely hope that that's how we are in Sullivan County schools. Surely our teachers are not told that they can't order something they need to teach their teachers.
I can respond to that as a former principal, as a former assistant superintendent. There's limits to the number of copies that you can make on a copier machine on, in many cases. Our teachers are limited. I don't know what the number is now, but they had a copy machine, they had a code they had to put in, and they could not exceed that number. The supplies, when you have a budget for a school system, that's exactly what it is. It's a budget, and you can't go over that. It's not like an industry that's making money. It's not like a profit-making, uh, business. So there are so many needs, and if you ask our teachers, and you said that tonight, some of you said they're not having phone calls, I can rest assured that after Rick puts his article in the paper tomorrow, you will have the emails and you will have the phone calls requesting, uh, all these things. I've never had an email about closing schools before until COVID hit. But when these things start, your phones will be ringing and your emails will be coming. We do have needs. You know, I personally, I've spent money for classrooms, not my classroom, but my wife's classroom, my daughter's classroom before, of buying the things that she would need. And I'm talking about both here, here in Sullivan County and in other schools. It's not just Sullivan County before there's not a need. Uh, for Tennessee High, where Mary was principal, uh, I know there was needs that they would say they had. Many times, that's why that they have to have fundraisers. That's why we heard tonight from Mr. Litten about what needs were here in, for some of the, uh, soccer, uh, needs. Uh, we heard about school boards. We've heard needs are for school boards. And there will be fundraisers going on to raise some of those things. There's people now looking for sponsors, I think, for jumbotrons and other things in, uh, West Ridge and other places. So there's always needs, and it's not like you're handing them the money and saying, okay, just go spend it. I've heard that sayable, somebody will just go out and spend the money on anything. But my wife bought candy for the kids as reward. She didn't have to, the school system wasn't gonna buy it, but she did it because it was a way of getting them to do their math. And she is still remembered today as somebody who gave Jolly Ranchers. I mean, I'm talking about adults walking up and saying, you're the one who gave us the Jolly Ranchers in fifth grade. Now, does that work? Yes, it does. But I can't imagine that she would go to a principal and ask that principal to spend money to buy, go buy Jolly Ranchers. Instead, she went and bought it on her own, and I paid for it.
I get what you're saying, but with the budget we got, I'm not talking about the candy, I'm not talking about our sports. I'm talking about what our teachers need in the classroom to teach our kids. If they do not have nothing in there, I get we have a budget in each school. But if these teachers don't have what they need in their classroom, then apparently we need to do something about the budget. Because if our fund balance is so high, why is our teachers having to go out and spend their own money to buy stuff for their class?
Each, each teacher has a different need. Uh, teacher pay teacher, I think, is a, is a, uh, uh, computerized system. It's not where you buy the worksheets and the different things that they would need, practice sheets. You've got most teachers, I may not be now, I may be out of date, out of date on that, but they had their own accounts, and they would pay with PayPal or something else to buy these, uh, individual worksheets that they would use in the classroom. They would buy computer programs that they would use as time. Now, I don't think they buy the computer programs now, but those things did happen. And if you go talk with the teachers and say, what do you need? Sit down and ask them, and they can probably tell you some things. Now, some of the things might be wants, not needs, just like with your children. If they come and say, I need this, do you say, do you want it or do you need it? And with the teachers, I don't want to be the one saying, is it a want or is it a need? Uh, if they need extra copies, that's a real need, not a want. If, if they need to buy a computer software program, it may be a want, a desire. But if we gave them the five hundred dollars, it was set up in such a way that it could go to the individual schools, and it could be pooled, just like the EP money. And those who didn't want to spend it, they put it together, and they could buy something big. I can remember the day when you bought your classroom, when you bought the TVs for the classroom, the teachers had to buy them. And not just, it's not unique to Sullivan County, it's, it's in all school systems. There's still out at Houston Middle School right now, some storage cabinets that I personally built and paid for that's left in the fifth grade classroom, because I took them out there when Mr. Miller was principal, I believe, and put them in my wife's classroom. And with the intent, when she retired, I would take them home with me and put them in my shop. But instead, I chose to leave them. That was a need, that was a want that she had, wasn't necessarily a need. She probably did need a place to store some stuff, but it was a want.
I get what you're saying. I guess my biggest issue is our fund balance is so high. County commissioners are saying, give our teachers five hundred dollars to buy these supplies. Us as a school system needs to do better for our teachers. Our teachers should not need anything to teach their kids. I understand you got to set a limit on some stuff, but to me, our teachers need a bonus more than they need supplies. With our fund balance the way it is, they should go call their principal, talk to their principal, and get whatever needs they need for their classroom. To me, this money needs to be spent somewhere else.
And how can you spend it somewhere else? You have to get the permission of the county commission to do that.
Well, that's fine, too. We send it back to them, tell them we're looking at doing something else, a bonus, a raise. I just really don't like the fact that it says in here for supplies. Our teachers should not need supplies. But our fund balance the way it is, they should go ask for anything they want, and they get it.
They discussed supplies, they discussed bonuses, and they disagreed among themselves as to what it should be. And I stood in the four meetings and listened to their, their discussion and tried to tell them that we had not approved it, that we had not made any recommendations, and that to us, it didn't matter whether it was a bonus or whether or not it was supplies. But if it goes with the bonus, then you've got support staff, you've got maintenance workers and others that are out there doing other things, or you're gonna give them a pay raise to go with it. Uh, supplies was to go directly to the kids. And they were pretty adamant that they wanted it to be for teachers who had teach, students assigned to them, to their classroom. It wasn't to be just for certified teachers, totally, but it was, well, Dr. Cox couldn't get the five hundred dollars. He had to have students that was assigned to him. And, uh...
I, I, I just really hope our teachers are not out there needing something, but they...
I can assure you that they are. I can assure you that there are needs out there that probably they're gonna hear about tonight, and some of you will be getting, uh, emails sent.
I hope we do.
I need this.
With our fund balance the way it is, it shouldn't be a need for this five hundred dollars.
The, uh, the fund balance, when I came on the board nine years ago, the fund balance almost didn't exist.
I, I get that, but we've got it built up. It shouldn't be there for, to build these new schools. It should be for what we got right now, and these, these teachers need something, they should have access, access to it. We shouldn't have to give them five hundred dollars for this. They should already have the supplies they need.
The teachers I talked to knew it and said, because some of these students are running virtual now, but they don't need as many supplies as they have in years past. So I've talked to several teachers about this, uh, since the work session, and none have expressed to me, we really need supplies this year. And also, we don't need as many as we have in years past. I, I, I mean, I, I was a teacher for many years before becoming an administrator. I always spent money out of my own pocket, too, my wife does. That's not the issue. The issue is stewardship, the funds, all the other things that we've mentioned. We can talk about this for the next hour, but we're getting nowhere.
The, the division, it is not spent this year, it stays at the school. They were adamant they'd not come back to central office as part of the fund balance. That was put in the resolution and the discussion that we had, and that's what the resolution called for, that they passed. Once the money went out to the teachers, it stayed there at the school with those teachers, who did not come back here. But I agree with Mr. Gilmore, we're not making any further, shall I go back to you and comment a question?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Dr. Rouse, now, Mr. Spivey?
No.
Mr. Gilmore?
No.
Mr. Hughes?
No.
Mr. Ierson?
No.
Motion third, we'll move on to the next item.
That does conclude the, um, items, uh, before you for action. And so we come now to non-agenda items for public comment. And I, I don't know, are there any sign-up sheets for non-agenda items for public comment? I don't think there are, uh, Mr. Jones. So I think you're to your comments, uh, board chairman.
Reminds you that on Monday, the night, at four thirty, we had the attorney general privilege meeting here with, uh, Chris McCarthy, and he will be present in person, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and it may be in the library. In the library here, that is a closed meeting. And it may be a Friday long meeting. I would anticipate that it would because there are several different, um, issues that we need to discuss. But then moving to our next meeting at, uh, four thirty. We have a work session scheduled on Tuesday at four thirty, December the first. And our meeting was supposed to be on Thursday at six thirty, but we have at least two board members that can't make that Thursday night meeting. So I think it'd be wise for us to take a look at trying to, uh, reschedule it. We could do it, we could do the meeting and work session at the same time, but we're gonna meet at South and do a tour of South and do a work session on the first. So that really makes a tough day if you try to do everything at the same time. We could move it to, uh, Tuesday, December the eighth, or Thursday, December the tenth.
You talked about the regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
We're about to workshop, still keep it the first.
Still keep it the first, uh...
I will be here, if that's okay, I just wanna make sure I'm...
Okay. Can anybody attend on the first? That sound?
Chairman, I'm always gonna be traveling on the first Tuesday, the workshop, I'm, I'll, I'll read this, if you have something to do.
I can't do the eighth, but I could do the tenth.
Okay, the tenth, it's on Thursday. Can anybody do the tenth? Now, if you want to come back...
Could we possibly do the tour of South another day and have the work session and the meeting on, on the first, when they want me to?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we could, I mean, could we delay the South tour and have the eighth being a, come on, so we're asking. Have the eighth being a combined session, the end work session, and...
I thought you said you couldn't do the eighth, eighth is a Tuesday?
The tenth.
Huh? The tenth?
The eighth or the tenth.
Yeah, I can't do the eighth, but I mean, I do...
Could you do, you could do the tenth? Okay, let's, just combine it on the tenth then, and we'll reschedule the tour of South and do it... Another time. Another time, and we'll do the work session at four thirty on the tenth and six thirty for the regular board meeting. And we'll, right now, ten will be scheduled right here because, uh, I'm assuming the main office is still gonna be closed. Yeah, I think so. Okay. So we'll, we'll do four thirty here, the work session, and six thirty for the board meeting, and we'll reschedule the tour of South. I think it's crucial that we do tour of the schools that are gonna be, uh, changing next year, and we've, uh, because we've done it this one here. And, uh, the day after we did this one, uh, or two days after, we had problems with the heating system over here that was in the same room that we were looking at last week, I believe. And we, we need to evaluate whether or not the work sessions and the meetings need to be separate. I mean, I'm, to me, it's important to be able to talk freely, and as long as we need to, and, uh, if we schedule them too close to each other, we can't do that. So if we start combining them, we might want to make sure we allow plenty of time for work session discussion. I mean, four thirty and six thirty should work, uh, I mean, it should give us enough time to do most of that discussion. But I'd like for us to be able to reschedule meetings at six thirty to start on time and, and not leave anybody waiting for that. So we'll, we'll evaluate whether or not we need to live them separate nights, but, uh... And I believe that's all we have. The committees, uh, that we assigned last week, we've talked about those, we haven't scheduled any yet, but we will be doing that soon. And I'm sure that the county commissioner will know that we didn't approve this tonight, but the, the good thing is, and from my point of view, there was five announced that they approved, and those were separate, so this one shouldn't be attached to any of the others. The only other public comment that needs to be made when we approve the consent agenda tonight, there was an item there in the consent agenda that said it authorizes the executive committee to execute the contract for design services for turf at West Ridge and Southern East Middle. Is that me? Uh, so we'll be, uh, reviewing that contract. We have a, a bid on it with the name, and we'll sign that, and it will go out for bid here, uh, within a few days, hopefully. Uh, well, we gotta get the sign totally ready, but, uh, Dr. Cox and I are the executive committee, so that authorized us to do that. And, uh, that should bring us up to date. Okay, board members.
Do you have a schedule of what schools we're gonna tour in mind by chance?
Uh, I'm open to whatever. I wanted to get South and Central in, so, uh...
Let's not leave out them Golden Raiders over there.
Pardon?
Let's not leave out them Golden Raiders. I know that closes, that school's closing, but I think it'd be, I think everybody needs to walk through it. I'll just look at how, how it is.
Now, I had, I didn't have any on the list that we were gonna close, but if you want to do it, that we can.
I think, I think the whole board needs to see north.
Okay. And, uh, as we said last week, Dr. Cox and I have been to three high schools and talked to staff, and we'll be going to middle schools here soon, and, uh, talking to them about opening school next year and the, and the closures. Paul, we'll start with you on comments tonight, any come around this way.
I hope our teachers don't think that, because we voted no on that, that we're not, not supporting them. We, I would personally like to see it go a different route, maybe a bonus, a raise, or something for our teachers, if, teachers. If you do need the money, email us, we'll need to know where at.
I know, it's Dr. Cox.
You can email Dr. Cox, but I'll take emails, too. I get a lot anyways.
I, I, since, since the board voted, I think it'd be nice to play email G.
Uh, I mean, uh... Because... I'll take all the emails. I may not respond all of them, but I'd be reading. So that's my biggest thing is, teachers, we are supporting you. I hope you understand that, and we'll just say that that money could be spent a different, different way. Mask up, head down, wash your hands. I had a sense, I saw this. Prayers for everybody.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yeah, just like to say, um, I'm thankful for all the efforts that teachers have been making always, but especially this semester. But I want to close my comments with, again, what, what Anthony and Randy did. Thursday was dark, it was raining, it was cold, and I just, you know, on a personal note, I just felt, if I went on my way to work, I probably wouldn't stop to investigate. I'd think I was doing my civic duty by calling nine one one and giving on my way, because I didn't want to get, I didn't want to get wet. But it was a tragic scene, and had those men not stopped and provided aid, uh, it would have been even more tragic. So, uh, there's a lot of teachers who are doing things like that, but this student in particular, uh, I'm so glad we were able to recognize him tonight.
First, I would, I'd like to recognize and thank the county commission for approving those, those other four areas that we requested. Um, and just because we didn't approve the five hundred dollars, I, I agree. I, everybody up here, I think, supports teachers, so, and I'm sure we will hear about it, Mr. Jones. But that's okay, that, I mean, we signed up for this. Um, uh, second, I'd like to thank parents and teachers during all of this, because, um, I know there's a lot of uncertainty even when we have an operating schedule, because, you know, you might get called one day and say your whole qu, school's closing down, because, you know, as in the building we're sitting in now, because we just didn't have enough bodies and adults to proctor the classes. And I would, uh, you know, not only agree with Paul... And I would, you know, not only agree with Paul, you know, wash your hands and all the good stuff we've been hearing for months, but I would point out, though, that the health department is telling us that the, the school day operations themselves are not really anything they can trace substantially to, to our increase in numbers. So that really factors into how I feel about this. But, but I would ask Dr. Cox and our, and our central office staff if maybe we could get a little bit more information on the board about the number of actual students who signed up for face-to-face, who, who are outside of the classroom. I, this list is great, but that only shows us who's in quarantine or isolation. Because I think at a certain point, if this is recurring and it ends up that fifty percent of the student body of people who want to be face-to-face are outside of their own control and force zone, then we really, really do need to reconsider our, our operating schedule, because we're really not benefiting anyone, if, if that's the case. And, and then finally, I want to thank Mr. Jones and Dr. Cox and all our lead team, who went to all the county commission meetings and worked through these issues and tried to answer questions. And I hope that we can continue to cooperate together and work together for all the taxpayers and the children in Sullivan County. I know we have two different jobs, but we all want what's best for our community.
Question?
I concur with all sentiments that's been made. I also would like to say thank you, Mr. Jones, thank you, Dr. Cox. I, I've never been the one to go in front of the commission to ask for money, so I commend and applaud, applaud you. And I do want to thank the commissioners as well, that did approve our money. I'd also like to recognize the Sullivan East Cross Country team for making it to state. They ran today at state and came in eighteenth. And also Mason Sanders from Central High School, just like to recognize him.
This will be four times, Mr. Chairman. I'm keeping score for, for those kids. I, I would like to ask or kind of point out that, did everyone get the email that we got about our ELA? Diagnostic comparison scores, and did you, everyone get a chance to look at that? You know, I've been talking about our failure rates and. Anyway, if, if you didn't get it, look back through the emails, we get a lot of emails, so you may have missed it. But I'm, I can't see here because of the dark, but I'm going to summarize it.
We can recognize your wife.
Mr. Palmer showed, showed me last month some, some of our scores. And to summarize, even though our failure rates are high, they're not as high as they were when I first called them out. We've improved them now, but, and I'm going to say that that's in part because we're back face-to-face, but we can't prove that, that's me talking. But our scores, our comparison scores were very close and sometimes higher. Now, that's a reflection of the job our people are doing, and it's incredible. Whatever it's, whatever you attribute it to, it's, it's incredible. Now, one of the things that was pointed out to me is, we're even able to isolate and understand what standards we come up short on, which turned out to be most of those between March and the school year. So we're able to target those and go back maybe and catch up. So, we're still engaged. So, with all the time laws, we're still within striking distance of being where we need to be. It's the best reflection of the work that we, we do that I've seen, that's on paper and proof of results. And, Mr. Palmer, if you're here, I don't know if you're here, but thank you so much for showing it to me at the end of last month's meeting, and thanks for sending it out to us as, as an email. It eased my mind quite a bit, and I really appreciate it. And congratulations to all those who had a hand in that success. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, that's the last time.
I'd like to basically say the same kind of things that Mr. Hughes said. I was very concerned about our, I guess, perceived, my perception of the failure rates or my perception of what might be happening, and very relieved that I was wrong. I don't like being wrong, but this is a good one. And so, and I do put that all back to the teachers. I mean, yeah, the lead team, they put a, a good system up, and the administrators, they got everything going, but our teachers are phenomenal. Our teachers and our system are second to none. I'm really glad we put this, or we're starting to, as I said, that the committee hopefully will get all the assignments up and get that, that group together, because I think that it is time for us to acknowledge them in another way. And I think it would be great, this is the timing, that it would be great to say, hey, I know COVID was a terrible time, and I know that you had to do things you never thought of, but here's what we think of you, and, and I think this is the perfect time for that. So, but until we do that, this will tell the teachers that we appreciate them, they do a great job, they're second to none, and we'll, we'll go in the right direction with that. That's it.
I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
I learned that yesterday, so we're going to adjourn.